Thank you. We're returning after a short recess and we will, we are ready to go now. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chairman Ward, Vice Chair Garris, County Commissioners. My name is David Byram. I'm Assistant Administrator at Pitt County ABC Board. I'm here to present our upcoming fiscal year 2013 budget. Our budget has been prepared according to NC Northern County General Statute 18B-1702. If you look at the handout I gave you, the first couple pages are just as a budget message. If you turn over to page three, it gets into the meat of the budget is basically what y'all probably wanted to look at. As you see, we have estimated total income at being $16,351,64 for fiscal year 2013. That's based on a 5% increase over projected sales from this year. Taxes based on that revenue would be $3.8 million and cost of goods sold would be $8.5 million, which leaves us, after operating expenses, we're looking at $2.7 million, which leaves us $1,331,648. As far as distributions, according to the sales we projected, the mandatory 3.5% and ballot tax that would go to the county would be $461,916. Alcohol, education, and rehab would be $45,724. And then you see the line for other county. That's additional on top of the mandatory distribution to the county, which would be an additional $538,84, which comes up to a total of $1 million for the county, which we balance out with our working capital retained at $285,924. Any questions?
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. We're gonna start. I mean, is that it? That's fine. We're ready to go. Let's start. Commissioner Owens, you want to start us?
No questions at this time.
I want, we want more money, a million. And we intend to get it.
And I will let you know, do we have a million in here?
Yeah, but we got it.
But our board is diligent about-
That's the bottom part.
Controlling expenses.
That's all I got to say, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Smith, Mr. Garris?
My comment was along the line of Commissioner James, we have 1.1 in this year's budget, and I think we even have 1.1 in next year's budget. And that's what we're expecting.
They're selling more all the time, though. We need-
And then, like I said, our board is diligent about controlling expenses to, because I want to give y'all as much as we can because I'm a Pitt County tax payer. I don't want my taxes raised, so.
Good. See what I'm saying.
Okay.
No comment at the present.
Okay. Commissioner Hammond?
No, ma'am. I haven't, of course, not.
Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, just real quick, why was the decision made to not make working capital retain $185,924 to, just because the budget's an estimation, so that they estimate the 1.1 that we expect? And as I know Mr. James has mentioned, I've mentioned many times, the product that you sell really contributes to a lot of issues we have in the county, which is why you give the money for the rehab. But, you know, in downtimes especially, sales have continued to rise and that's a symptom of it, which does increase EMS responses. It does increase sheriff responses. What was the decision to appropriate it that way? Because we know we went through the whole thing with it last year, and I would just think to appropriate it that way would avoid the same discussion starting over.
Well, I mean, we do have to have some money to put back in in case something does happen. But like I said, once we get to the end of the year, if we got it, we got it. I mean, if we don't, we don't. I mean, I don't know what our total, like you said, this is just an estimate. I don't know what our total is going to be profit-wise until the end of next year.
Yes, sir. And we understand that. And we're not asking you to say that without a doubt that sales will be this. But since we're estimating, why not estimate in a way that, just that way we have, because it was kind of sticky.
I mean, I can carry that back to the board.
And I know you're close, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all that. And just one other question. In your budget, because I'm sharing, so I may have missed something, was there any pay increases for employees included in this budget?
We're not doing a cost of living. We are implementing a salary plan. But I will say to offset that cost, currently, as far as 401K, we do 5% for everybody, which is what the county does. But we're gonna reduce 401K to matching, giving 1%, matching up to 5% to help match that cost as far as, to offset that cost as far as the salary plan. So employees won't be getting 5% 401K anymore.
I understand.
Except for law enforcement, because law enforcement is guaranteed that.
Right, the General Assembly does that. But on the salaries, what percentage are, I know you're doing an offset, but what percentage are they tracking up?
I think it comes out to be like $5,000 a month.
So does that make everything flat really from last year because of the reduction to 401K?
Pretty much. I mean, it's gonna be just a little bit added expense, but not much.
Okay. And I was just asking, because, you know, we know our employees-
And that's why we're offsetting with 401K to help give y'all what y'all would like.
Yes, sir. And thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Let me make one statement and then, just to reiterate the couple of statements that were made is, we would appreciate you taking it back. Most budgets are based on the prior year. All budgets are actually, and the projection, you know, for the next year. And to prevent what happened this past year from happening, you know, that 0.1 would make a difference, I think.
Yeah, because I know we didn't put, we only put the 400 and 8,000 in last year.
Yes, exactly.
So that's why we put the million in this year.
Exactly. So we just feel like that would be, you know, that is what we're gonna have in our budget. And we will understand as we get our quarterly reports, if it's not up, you know, at that time. So I think our plan is to leave it in our budget regardless. Yes, Madam Chairman?
Steph and I did meet with Teresa Campbell and David Byram in our last quarterly meeting on the distribution and their progress with revenues and expenditures. And we talked about their fund balance or their working capital. And per statute, they're under a goal trying to get up to 12 weeks. They're currently at about nine weeks, I believe.
Yeah, a little over nine weeks.
A little over nine weeks. One of their goals is in trying to get that up to 12 weeks is they'd like to replace the Arlington Boulevard store more in the Bell's Fork area. And they need, their goal is to build their working capital up so they can then make a capital expenditure somewhere down the road where they buy land, build a building and such. I discussed with them, along the same lines you're leaning right now from hearing is, about the $1.1 million distribution, to continue that into fiscal year 1213, and that to have a conversation with the Pitt County Board of Commissioners as to their capital plan, and that, you know, maybe the following fiscal year, we could, the county could agree to less than 1.1 if the economy started coming back, if we knew their long-term plans of what a building would cost, what land would cost, so that we, because they're, once they make this move to buy land and build a building, they're gonna spend the working capital down. So then they end up with six weeks or four weeks of working capital, and they'd have to start building that back up. But my conversation with them, and I think Ms. Gallagher was with me that day, was to hold off on trying to build that working capital up, keep the county's distribution at the $1.1 million level until we start to dig ourselves more out of this, more towards economic recovery as we see signs and indications pointing to. So as Chairman Ward said, yes, we have included $1.1 million of distribution from the ABC Board, and we'll be counting on that $275,000 quarterly to equate to the 1.1 million.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The ABC Board is current on all that. This is version that stood the county for 2011 and '12, aren't they, of this matter?
They've met the first three quarters and we'll be waiting on the fourth quarter after June 30th when the distribution is made.
Well, we'll probably make that distribution before June 30th, close out the year and everything.
Okay.
Before they close out the year.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you for coming.
Y'all have a good day now.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Noel Lee, excuse me.
Noel's PowerPoint is behind the Thursday tab, so if you want to follow along with what he's-
Okay. So if you'll look behind your Thursday tab, we are way ahead of being Thursday anyway. And we'll hear from Noel Lee with the EMS by district budgets. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Scott had asked me today to present for the emergency management part firing EMS presentation, but we'd just mentioned a couple of our other divisions, 911 and emergency management. You know, I think so many times when you pick up that phone, when you call 911, you're coming into our center, which is the public safety answering point, or the PSAP, in which we receive right at 170,000 phone calls a year. So if you average that out, 460 a day. We transfer law enforcement calls of right at 40, or a little over 45,000. We do 22,363 EMD calls, and that's on the average of 61.3 that we try to provide in medical assistance. So not going to spend that a lot of times. Emergency management, we're doing fire inspections and always trying to be prepared for storms. So at this time, try to go ahead and get you, opening this up, and you were able to find that presentation when? Okay.
We're ready.
Okay. Just to give you a little bit of heads up on what the EMS activity has been. I think, you know, you go back and you look at the history that we've got, and we formed the EMS Oversight Committee, which I think has been a large advantage to the county. But in 2011, county EMS provided 11,373.5 hours of service in the calendar year of 2011, had a utilization rate of each one of the squads of right at 13%. And on an average, and these are some of the things that, you know, Finch had said that we needed to go back and work with, is 90% of the time, an EMS unit is on the scene within 16 minutes of the call to 911. So I think that does speak high, especially in a lot of rural activities. Dispatches, now, this is all county now. This is not including the city of Greenville. 11,780 transports of, right at 77, no transports, councils and others. So it's there. Process, I think all of us understand, that squads submit these budgets to our finance service. Budget requests reviewed by financial services staff, and then that is presented back to the EMS Oversight Committee. And this was presented back in March of 2012. We have met one time since then, but there had been no activity, so there was nothing to follow up. Now, the next item that you have is a spreadsheet. And this is pretty much is what was presented to the EMS Oversight Committee for comparison. Now, thanks, we go through and look, that if we are looking at a 4.4% EMS tax, you see that we could be $300,000 short utilizing that first column. The second column is basically what the EMS Oversight Committee is recommending, which basically brings us back revenue.
That table corresponds to- That's 24 in your booklet from what I presented yesterday.
And it's larger.
I see the larger version.
Okay, good. I know it's hard for me to see here, and there's a glare too.
But 24 does have it enlarged.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted-
Go ahead.
We'll go ahead and continue on. What's the recommendation of the EMS Oversight Committee? They recommend a revenue neutral tax rate of 4.6. Fund EMS squads at 412. This is less than what they requested, except for Fountain. Fountain had a lower request, and that we fund them at their requested amount. That we continue the fleet management plan, two remounts plus one UAMLance utilizing fund balance. That we have built some fund balance there. And the equipment replacement, the fibrillators are starting to get old, and they actually replaced 11 of those fibrillators at all locations using the current stream, current revenue stream for four years of debt service. So that is what is, that is set for, $125,000, I believe is correct figure.
And when you say fund balance, you're speaking of the EMS-
Yes, ma'am.
-fund balance.
Because what we've done through that is totally different.
Fund balance is a volatile word, so we want to make sure it's totally out of the EMS fund.
Yes. And it is, I think you understand it's come through from the collections, you know.
Right.
When we talk about the fire departments, I think all of us realize there are 20 rural fire service districts, 17. Well, these rural departments provide fire protection in their respective districts, and that we, as a county, contract with three municipalities for that rural protection. So we actually contract as a county with 20 different agencies, but 17 being rural and three being municipal departments. Again, just a little bit of their activity, responded to 2,300 calls in 2011. Their average dispatch within, from the time they were dispatched to they answered the calls, two minutes and a half, had a little response time of right at eight minutes, and on time seen of about 48 minutes. So this does not include any training, does not cleaning up, a lot of different things here, but again, just a little bit of their activity. Remind you that you, back earlier this year, approved and created 20 fire service districts, and they were for the rural districts, not in the municipalities. That you set fire protection tax district rates to zero, being effective July 1, through that resolution that you created. And that you now, as Board of Commissioners, will need to establish a fire service district tax rate for each of the 20 service districts. What's the process? The process has been the fire service district rate is recommended by the three-person fire commission of each district. During your process, you did create a three-person commission for each one of the districts to look at their budget and to make a recommendation back to support the budget of each department. You, as Board of Commissioners, needs to set and adopt a tax rate for each service district. Creation of service district increased numbers of properties in 10 of the 20 districts. So actually, by increasing that, it did increase the properties that could be taxed in 10 districts. Tax revolve affected values across the county. I think all of us understand and realize where we've been with that. Seven fire department districts had lower estimated value when you compare our fiscal year 1112 to fiscal year 1213. What's some of the general fund allocations that are provided to the fire departments? $10,000 to each rural district. We compensate them $10 per each dispatch. The county provides funds for the workers' comp for each of the fire departments. And one of the things that we had been doing in the past had been setting aside monies in the general fund for allocations towards the purchase of a new truck, where we're talking about a pumper or a tanker that could actually be purchased every 20 years in there of $10,000. I think the manager right now is suggesting that this be funded through contingency funds. Service districts funding tax rates that have been submitted and recommended by the three-person fire commission range from 2.5 cents to 8 cents per $100 of value. Bethel and Belleville requesting tax rate for the first time. This is the first time this is newly created districts, and they're asking for it the first time. Pacoles did not present a budget, but staff set tax rate as previous year level. This is another one, Scott, that if you can help me where this table may be found.
It's on page 26, the fire district.
Okay, because I know this one is also small. And this one right here actually looks at what was the value of that district in 1112 and what's the estimated value in 1213. Some of these districts may have grown because their properties increased, so that value there. It does show what the current rate of 1112, the tax rate. The next column will show you the revenue neutral rate, if that's what you so choose. But this third column of the proposed rates is what the three-person commission has recommended, or is recommending to you as their amount of funds that would need to meet their budget. And the amount that would be levied is showed in the next one by that, and again, what departments would be requesting vehicles.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir. Can we wait till he then, excuse me?
Excuse me for interrupting. I wanted to ask Mr. James, what transpired in Belleville and Bethel that they needed this for the first time?
We, when the time comes, I will explain that to you.
Can we wait until he finishes and then we'll get that?
Yeah, I will explain it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Mr. Lee, thank you.
Okay. And for my last slide, I do want to include sort of as good note, we just received this information from Office of State Fire Marshal's Office. For the 2012 grants, 12 fire departments have been awarded these grants in totaling of $138,676. And these grants ranged from anywhere from $4,100 to $22,000. And so I'll say congratulations to these departments for going out trying to find matching grant funds as we go through there. So, so Madam Chair?
All right. Thank you very much. We'll start down here with you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This be appropriate time to, if I had a question about the PSAP? Okay. No, with the dispatching, if they were combined with the sheriff's office, my only concern with that is, is that we define it well, about who's in charge of who. And I would prefer that everybody fall under some but one central thing instead of territories. And also that everyone's cross-trained, in that that way there's not territorial about, well, I don't dispatch fire, I only dispatch deputies or vice versa. Is that part of the process, thought process of it?
Commissioner Webb, I think when you look back across the state, there are many variables that play within to tell you that it could be done easily. Yes, it could be. But again, it is a process that we would have to look at others to see how they have done it. It is being done today in places, so it could be done. I think the cross-training is important, because again, you know, when we go back and look at the number of calls that's taken, you know, I think, and I've argued with Scott, and I say argue with Scott, have requested positions in 911 because we are, we are overworked there. And so again, and I know the budget is where it's at, I think, could we combine? Yes, I think, you know, it does need to have one person in charge. You do not need that separation of, I don't touch this, or I don't touch that.
And it would help you if they were combined?
I think it would be different, but I think we can make it work.
Okay.
Be good for the county.
Could you be supportive of it locating under one central?
Yes, sir.
That way you don't have supervisory issues?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As to, thank you, Noel. Yes, Scott?
I think from our standpoint, we would also, would recommend that it would be under, combined under the primary PSAP. I think Noel was alluding to his very introductory comments, the call volume of the 911 center, and that in most counties, as we've done research across the state and all counties as such, and correct me if I'm wrong, Noel or Melanie, the majority of them are not under an elected official, but under, like emergency management or an independent aid department.
Okay. I think even if you went to a fully consolidated one where you took all communications centers in Pitt County and put it in one, under one roof, then I think you would be looking at 911 board with a director there. I think in this type situation, the fit, it's got just-
This is kind of minimal combination that we're talking about. And would the funding for, would that come out of the sheriff's office to cover those positions?
Well, yeah. I mean, you would have to have the, because primarily, the only, the only expense I have primarily is the salary. So we would have to have that salary expense combined with the 911.
Okay. And thank you, Noel. Thanks, Scott. And as far as the fire departments go, just in my review of it, I just think when, as we look at these things, because no decisions we made today, that we need to keep in mind that the high majority of these people are doing this for free when it comes to responding to fires and going into burning buildings or pulling people out of cars. And I think that we need to support them and make sure they have the equipment necessary to get their job done, because they can't, they aren't receiving a salary for putting themselves at risk. And with that, that's all I have, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yes, I was wondering if that would improve the response time by having, having one department dispatch these, receive and dispatch these calls.
You could probably save a little bit of time, because when our center is the PSAP, when they receive the call, just as soon as they identify it as law enforcement, they'll go ahead and say, stand by, transfer you into law enforcement, and it's a one, one-punch type deal, and it's sent. I think the other thing that you do stop and realize too, that it could be a law enforcement call, but it could be an emergency medical call that may actually include and need fire EMS, the whole works. So now we've got, which is more important, to get law enforcement going, or now to do the emergency medical dispatch protocol to try to start providing-
Some of both don't like to do.
Yes, sir. So again, sometimes you get law enforcement coming, give me the call back. But a lot of times, that caller may think this is over and they hang up. But there's a lot of valuable information could be. So, yes.
Mr. Hammond, just to further elaborate on Noel's comments, within the county's primary PSAP downstairs, I had initially recommended deleting one telecommunicator. And I don't know if Noel's aware of this or not, but actually put that back in at the last minute, because a number of years ago, we added one position down there for the sole purpose of allowing those employees, again, that's a seven days a week, 24 hours day operation. When we have a holiday, like this coming up Monday will be Memorial Day, they don't get the holiday off. They've got to work. So a number of years ago, we added a position that actually allowed them to take a holiday off. They might not get Monday, but by having that extra person to work in the hours, they could take their Memorial Day on Friday or Saturday or Sunday the following week. So we had originally thought about taking that position away, but then it would have, we would have been racking up liability with comp time hours and such. So I put that back in there. That's, I just say that to illustrate how tight the staffing of the 911 center is.
Okay.
And I did see that, because I looked back.
Were you aware of that?
Thank you, Shelley.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, is that it?
Yeah. That answers my question.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
No comments at the present.
Garris?
I'd like to say I thank all the EMS workers and our fire department, firemen, for all the work they do for our county. We appreciate it. I will go on and state my position on two issues up front. I do serve on the EMS Oversight Committee, and over the last couple of years since we developed a formula for allocating the dollars to the various EMS units, that has worked very, very well, and that process has gone very smoothly. In order to maintain that, we do have to make that a revenue neutral, which will go from a 4.4 cents to a 4.6 cents, and I am supportive of that, and I hope the board will be supportive of that. The EMS, they do a good job, and this is what they need to maintain the performance that they've been granting to the county over the last two or three years. So I'm going to support that. Second thing, second comment I'd like to make is, when we look at the fire departments, I focus on the one that is in District 5, which I think I should focus on for this issue, and that is the Winter Fire District. That is a new district. They had a 2.5 cents tax rate. They requested an increase last year. I did not support that, and the reason was because when they formed that unit, it increased the tax rate, insurance rate up to nine, and they were working very hard to bring it down to a six. I personally did not feel like that with the citizens in that district, having to pay additional insurance premiums, that it was appropriate to add on top of that an additional tax. That district has worked very hard. They've got that rate back down to a six, and I commend each one of them who have worked very hard on accomplishing that. So this year, they are requesting a 4.4, I believe, and I am going to support that. That still will make the Winter Fire District the fifth, with the fifth lowest rate of the 25 districts in the county. So I'm going to support that. There are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Some of us went over to Aiden and looked at a truck that they had for turnout gear. Have they got enough money from the tax to replace that truck, or do they need a penny increase? Are you familiar with it?
I think they've asked for an increase. I think that is part of their budget is, because now here, you've got that situation where you've got a town department, and you've got also where they're providing a rule. So it's a combination of coming in, and I think within that budget, they're saying that they're, they're going to support the payment of that new equipment truck that you're referring to.
Yeah, it was a penny. They thought they were going to need a penny increase.
Yes, sir. And I think, you know, that's-
They've asked for half a penny, half a penny. But actually, we're pointing out that through the creation of the service-
The gentleman in the audience wants to speak.
Of the service districts, their tax base increase, so that should actually meet their needs, I would think.
We talked to them, the four of the fire districts. They didn't know how much they were going to get from the fire district at the time. And the penny would fund the whole thing, but it's a half a penny now.
Half a penny, combined with the growth in the-
We talked to them, the four of fire districts, they didn't know how much they were going to get from the fire district at the time. And the penny would fund the whole thing, but it's a half a penny now.
Half a penny would combine, combined with the growth in the base due to the creation of the fire service district.
I think Mr. Webb went on occasion and viewed the trucks, and I think he will support the half a penny raise.
Just so I never have to ride in it again.
Okay. Mr. James?
I guess I'm on the hot seat. Am I not? Anyway, the two districts, uh, two fire departments that I represent, Commissioner McGlaughlin and myself are in complete agreement on what I'm going to say. First, the Bellville Fire Service Area now, I believe we call it, uh, that they didn't have any taxes. Uh, the town has decided that they either pay up or, or we're going to kick you out. I guess that's right, isn't it? So many words, Todd. Huh?
I don't get to, but.
I know you don't, but I mean, what I've said is correct. They've got to pay up. They got to start paying their share. So therefore, they have to have a tax. And therefore, Commissioner McGlaughlin and myself, we are both going to support that because it is needed, we feel like. All right, the Belleville Volunteer Fire Service District, we are not supporting any, zero. And the reason for, uh, very, is very simple. And we have said, and I have told David and those people there, when they really need it, I will support it, and I will. All right, the reason for wanting a fire tax is, uh, for a storage building in which they have a wonderful building. If you don't believe it, go out there and visit it. They have two offices, fire bays, kitchen, large meeting room, and, uh, they've got three rooms that, that they can use for storage. They said they use on, uh, a place off for storage, but if they got that much, uh, material, they need to sell. They don't need to buy. And, uh, so, uh, the next thing, of course, too, is they, uh, we are in debt some, but very little. But I believe, David, they have, you have about ninety-five thousand dollars in your checking account, don't you?
I don't know what the amount is, Mr. James, and I, right now, I'd rather not respond.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. But that's the way, uh, it stands. And I did meet with them and told them that, uh, the community was not, and the community is not. They want to vote on it. They could, but they get, they, it doesn't have a chance, and you know that. But, uh, so we are not supporting any, uh, fire tax in the Belleville Service District at this time.
That's, that's you and Mr. McGlaughlin. When you say we.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. James?
Yeah.
I will say though, that we treated all twenty service districts.
Oh, I know that.
Identical in the same process. Submit your budget. Let your three-person commission recommend what they feel needs to make.
Well, that's, and I could go. I could go into those three too now, very easily, as you know.
Mr. James also just want to point out, of the twenty service districts.
They would have the lowest rate at one-point-eight-nine cents of the twenty.
It's only a beginning, Mr. Manager.
I understand.
Look at all of them.
Okay. Any, anything else, Mr. James?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Owens?
I once again want to commend all of the fire people that participate. I feel that they should have whatever they need to give the services to the people. Like my, I want to commend the EMS, and particularly the finance department and the oversight committees for their work and dedication to providing and bringing back to the people of this county something that they're about to lose.
Thank you very much. Uh, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Lee.
Madam?
Yes, sir.
One other thing I would like to just mention, that we are public safety too. Sometimes it's sort of overlooked that we're not public safety. We don't tote weapons, but we are public safety too, even from the nine-one-one through.
Thank you. That is true.
Could I ask him a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Noel, why do these fire departments have to go to all of these wrecks, like at the Belleville? Do I ask them how many fires you have? They have around twelve fires to fifteen, you know, home fires. But they have a whole lot of wrecks to go to. And, uh, why?
When nine-one-one receives.
That's really not their job. Let's face it.
It may not be their job, but nine-one-one, when they receive that call, they know they're dispatching an EMS unit with two personnel on it. They are transferring that call to HP, which may only send one person. You may have a road blocked. And so now this unit is going in to help with traffic control, do not know whether it's a possibility of a fire. Uh, could be trapped individuals that they may have to extricate. There's a lot of services that fire department could be down, power lines, a lot of things, um, that, that fire department does do in that response.
Well, you got, that's where your sheriff department, law enforcement, and so forth, they're the ones.
But he doesn't have enough people.
Oh, we won't go down, but, uh, look, you're just, they're passing the buck, is what they're doing.
Okay. Just one minute. Now, recognize.
Noel, also, Noel, on a, a vehicle crash though, and I think this will address some of that, is that a, a fire department is more equipped to deal with any kind of hazmat thing, gas leaks.
Hazmats and other.
That could turn into a fire, or if there's a tanker overturn. So really, they, if I'm correct, in, in my experience, they're actually in control of the scene. The officer investigates whether or not there was any infraction or criminal activity that caused the wreck. But however, once the wreck occurs, in the abstract, it's not a crim, crime scene, it's a, a potential hazmat issue and public safety issue, and that's why they get out there and they have the equipment. Because if, um, and they'll, I'm, I'm not going to tell you what it is, but I know they all know what a copper meter is. And when you're dealing with hazmat stuff, because we don't have the equipment to get close to things. And, uh, they, they recognize those things, and they're more up to date on hazmat issues and, and do most of the instructing when it comes to. And not every one of them is a hazmat situation, but ever, since every one of them has the potential to be, and they have the abilities, the knowledge, training, and equipment to deal with those types of issues, I think is why they're dispatched. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Most time law enforcement use rule of thumb. They back off to the thumbnail or cover.
Why? I'm usually so far away, you wonder what I even got to do with.
But I, yeah, I will say on behalf of EMS, because I have rode EMS, when I go into a vehicle, when I did go into vehicles to help someone at a motor vehicle accident, knowing that the fire department was there to protect me as a responder meant a lot.
Well, I think more than anything else, besides the personal things, is the fact that this is an accepted practice throughout the state of North Carolina and the United States as far as fire departments and EMS are concerned. So, you know, it is one of those things that is not like added on just because we feel like adding it on, I think.
And some of our fire departments now are actually starting to do cardiac first response.
Yes, and we have some, I was going to say, I think we have some people who are riding as volunteer firemen who are taking courses and things and getting trained in that area.
Does some of that also fall under NIMS?
Well, NIMS is that whole management structure of somebody being in charge. You know, every time you ever do something, somebody's got to be in charge. Somebody's going to do something.
But incident command usually defaults to fire in, in something like that, as long as it's not a criminal, uh, act.
You know, most time that will default there, but it could be.
Well, there's usually the joint command, but, but then whoever specialty it is.
You know, if we, if we task something off to law enforcement, we don't tell you how to do it, right? You, this is a task that we need and.
That's right. I just want to illustrate the structure and why it is what it is. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much. We do have someone in the audience from Belleville. Now, yes, please come forward. To respond. Identify yourself, please, and where you live and what it is you do for Pitt County.
My name is David Robuck. I'm the Assistant Chief of Belleville Volunteer Fire Department that Mr. James was speaking of a while ago. Um, I wanted to not necessarily beat him down, but correct him in one statement he made. The addition that we're looking at to add to our building is not to, we're not requesting these funds for that building. It is an addition of eighteen by twenty feet, uh, that we, two years ago, voted to start looking at. Carried it before the board. Mr. James, of course, is on our Board of Directors there at the Fire Department. And we voted to look into having this addition made. A year later, we carried it before the membership, and they all voted to have it done. We had the plans build up. The matching funds that Noel talked about just a minute ago, we were awarded matching funds from the grant, from the, uh, grant program of the state to build this building. We're looking to take this money for Belleville to keep our capital reserve where it needs to be. Last year, we took ten thousand dollars out of our budget to add to what we get from calls, state money, and grants. Uh, Mr. James, I don't know if it was ninety-five thousand or how much it was last hour of call. It was about, it was eighty or maybe some more.
Yeah.
But if we continue taking ten thousand dollars a year without any revenue coming back in, uh, through our sales, we've had some good sales. But if we don't have the revenue to replenish what we're taking out in ten years, what will we have? And these trucks aren't cheap. I mean, we're, we're not asking to deplete the taxpayers over there. That's, that's not what we're looking for. So any help is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. I wanted, not about what he has said, but the most important thing that me and the citizens of the Belleville Service District are concerned about is support for the rural fire department there. We have big support. If you don't believe it, go to a sale. If that tax is put into bin, it's dead. It's gone. Because they are not going to participate. They're not going to be cooking those cakes. They're not going to be coming out there and giving their time to taking the work when they have to pay taxes. And I told David that, and he knows that. It has happened at every one of them, and that is the main thing. It is the only thing that we have going for us to take and to get the people together to work together. All the churches work together, and it's the only time that we ever get them to work together is at that sale. And that's the main reason, good people, that we, or that I, and not only me. You go to Belleville and you talk to the people there, go to the store and simple, and you'll see what I'm talking about. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Not, I don't know what David's right or wrong.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you coming. Um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Lee. Um, okay, we have reached that point, gentlemen. And we need to sort of make a decision. Yesterday, when we, uh, requested that we bring in the additional people that were coming on Thursday, I think a statement was made that we would stay as long as we needed to do, to, to get the job done. I don't know how you feel about that right now, um, but, uh, we need to decide whether to go proceed on and give some directives and some information to our leadership team as to what we expect for them to bring back to us. Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah, let's roll.
Let's keep on moving on?
Yep.
Okay. Holl if you need a recess. Okay. I guess we, do you want us to turn it over to you, or do you want us to start down and, as the commissioners?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for feedback from the board specifically.
Okay, let's get that first. Okay. Um, let's start here.
All right. Very good. Uh, first of all, I think that Scott, Melanie, you and your staff have done a tremendous job in pulling this budget together. I appreciate the fact that you gave us the two options so we can see the impact of, uh, keeping the tax rate at the current level. I have looked at both of those proposals, and I personally think that the Level One, which, uh, keeps our, our revenue neutral, which does increase the tax rate to sixty-eight cents, I think is a reasonable approach. Now, again, uh, what that means is the revenue coming to the county will essentially be the same. Does that mean that every individual taxpayer is going to pay the same amount of taxes? No, because everybody's evaluation on his, his or her piece of property wasn't the same. So I'm supportive of the, uh, revenue neutral. Again, I appreciate the, uh, program that you have implemented a couple of years ago on rightsizing the organization. We have been cutting out what I believe the fat to be, and even at Level One, the one that you recommended, that is a reduction of two-and-a-half million dollars, which I think is pretty aggressive. If we were to go with the Level Two option, which would be the rate neutral, then we would have another two-and-a-half million dollars to eliminate. And I just don't know how we can do that. I'm also very pleased that in Level One, and another reason I'm supporting Level One is because it does keep us, uh, not having a negative impact on the low wealth, low, low wealth funding stream for the schools. And I think that's very important. I think it would be devastating to the schools if they lost that six million dollars or five-point-four million dollars of low funding. Not everything about Level One am I pleased with, but that just comes with the ballgame. I don't like the idea of the fees going up, but I know, but I'm also supportive of the principle that users paying for the service, because somebody's got to pay for the service. The person using the service can pay for it, or every taxpayer can pay for it. So I'm okay with that. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is our inventory of cars. I've looked at that list, and they, you know, some of the sheriff's cars have a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-ninety thousand miles, and I'm very concerned about that. And I believe, Scott, you mentioned something yesterday about there may be a, some money available to, uh, purchase some cars, and I hope that that will come to pass, and you will explain that to us at some point in time.
The June, either on the fourth or the eighteenth.
Okay. Uh, good. Uh, let's see. Oh, and, uh, Melanie, I know that according to your presentation, our estimated fund balance as of six-thirty-twelve, estimated, is going to be twelve-point-oh-two percent. What do you estimate the fund balance to be at the end of June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, in Level One and Level Two?
It, it would not materially change because you don't, the only way fund balance changes is if you over-collect revenues or greatly diminish expenses. So where you are right now should hold you constant. If you were to make deeper cuts, then your fund balance, of course, could go up, but it's simply because the cash would stay the same. But the divisor, the expenditure number would be smaller.
So at the end of next, uh, this next budget cycle, you expect it to still be in the twelve, twelve-and-a-half percent range? And that really doesn't change with Level One or Level Two?
It would change slightly with Level Two, because you would reduce the, the divisor.
So you would eat into that. Okay. Uh, let's see. I've talked about EMS and the fire department. And also I'm, uh, equally hoping that with, uh, the establishment of the Level One base, as Scott pointed out yesterday or day before, that, uh, maybe in next year's budget cycle, we will be, be able to have some, uh, salary adjustments. Because again, this will be about, I believe, the fourth year that we have not been able to fund that. There are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I support the number-one proposal presented by the county manager because I believe he has touched base adequately with every department and related agency. And, uh, I believe this is about the best that we can do under the circumstances. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, I want to know, is there any grant money out there anywhere?
Commissioner Hammond, we received grant money all throughout the year within the various departments. And actually, that's why we started with a, a general fund budget of a hundred million dollars, and it increases, increases throughout the year. They're the normal grants that we go after, whether in the sheriff's department or emergency management. The, the grant you heard Noel announce for the fire departments, they're just more your ongoing grants. There's no money out there that's going to be the, um, the golden goose, that's going to lay some eggs for us to low, lower the tax rate or increase services dramatically. It'll be just more what I anticipate, um, more normal operating procedure in terms of applying and receiving grants.
Or that agents, federal agencies, Scott, that kept some of those municipalities and cities in, uh, in the country from having to lay off, uh, police officers or whatever.
We, we applied COPS funding, I believe. We did apply for that, and I think you gave the sheriff authority to seek that.
Right, but in, in.
It's still being pending.
And in past years, we've not been awarded it. We have a current application up there. Just, you know, be wary of a grant because they often come with strings, and it may fund the officer in the first year. But as that money steps down, you're expected to step up. Um, so always know that.
I believe that had a, um, it was a four, it was three years' worth of COPS funding for the, the officers. Required the county to fund the, the final, the fourth and final year. So in essence, you had a twenty-five percent match average over four years. But that is the type of funding that our departments are, are seeking and looking at every source.
Was there anything allocated for equipment?
Sure, just like the, um, the fire departments have received equipment through the Office of State Fire Marshal. We have an internal grants committee that is scouring the internet, whether federal sites, state sites, looking for grants. And the Health Department is very active. All departments are, are active to one degree or another.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thanks, staff, for the budget they presented. You know, when I looked at it and I came into it, I never want to see the tax rate increase. But I think when, and what we need to make sure that we're always communicating to the public is that, to the extent the budget has decreased over the past several years, and any numbers I get wrong, correct me, Scott, but that we have eliminated 87 open positions.
Yes, under this Level One, 87.7 full-time equivalent positions over the last three years. The Level One budget for next year would limit 43.8 positions, of which 29.6 are vacant and 14.2 are through the ERIP program.
And none of them are bodies.
Correct, live bodies.
And at the same time, spending's still going down $2.5 million.
Correct.
And I don't think we can say that enough, that even though the rate may increase some, it is not a frivolous increase, and that we are saving 40 jobs, 40 families, at the same time having eliminated 87 jobs and reducing, unfilled jobs, and reducing spending by $2.5 million. And I think it's a responsible budget that you put forward, and I appreciate the time and efforts that you all have gone through for it. And I know the discussion's not totally over, but I want to make sure that we explore every option as we move forward, and that we're nimble in the budget where we may have to ask people to remit funds, we may have to do something different as it goes to revenue because we have to have the money from somewhere. We have to run a county. And I appreciate all the department heads that presented, and thank you for your time. And I hope the citizens will pay not just attention to the broad philosophical version of what a budget is, but actually pay attention to the specifics of what it is and the numbers of what it is when you're looking at $4 a month versus this view. Because a lot of times when people talk about a tax increase, they get an idea about the federal government increasing a billion dollars in taxes when we're talking about $4 to save 40 families' jobs and health insurance for their children. And because if you take them out of the workforce in this economy, they're not going back into the workforce. And so they are going to still be coming to the county, and they're going to be getting paid by the county, but it's going to be in the form of services instead of a paycheck. And I think it's a, I think it's a good budget. And I think we all need to take those fire departments very seriously in their request too, because I think they can all explain and articulate their needs. And that's all I've got, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
I think when you look at the total budget, the two things that sticks out in my mind is one, that we will have to fund to ensure that the schools will get the low-well funding. And I think this is done with Level One. Is that right, Melanie?
Yes, sir.
And that's one of the driving things in my mind. And also, it also will lose some employee positions in this, aim if we go with this. And it is a slight increase in the money per $100 valuation, but the money that will be collected, as I understand it, won't be any more than we collected this year. So that's the one I would look at.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin?
I've never been for a tax increase since I've been on this board. I, you know, I'm very perplexed somewhat with this. I think, Scott, you've done a tremendous job in terms of making your presentation to us. You know, but when you talk about a tax increase on the backs of the many people who can't afford it and who are just suffering out there, you know, a half a penny makes a difference. But then you flip that side over, and you see the number of people that would be affected with jobs lost. And I can't bear in my mind to have voted for something that would eliminate jobs from people who's trying to make a decent living, people who are working and supplying their, supporting their families. And to have those jobs eliminated, it would be too much on me to bear. I'm at this part, you know, 55% of the people, the citizens of this county, would, if you look at Level One, actually would have somewhat, if I'm reading this correctly, a lower payment as compared to last year. And I know that's not saying 100%, but it's 55%.
Can you clarify that? You might have, that was a residential example, so you might have somebody who has a residential house, and they're part of that 55%, and their house bill is lower. Now, if they own a business in town, it went up, the bill on their property may go up. So you may have more than one, I just want to be transparent and real with you. So you may have vacant land, you may have farmland. I mean, there's all different factors you have to figure into it. So I don't want to try to mislead the board or the public at all. That was a simple illustration, but it's very complicated when you try to apply it across the board. I don't want to shoot myself in the foot by saying that either, but I want to be transparent at the same time.
Well, you stated residential in all of it, every time, so that it was just an example.
We don't want you to shoot yourself in the foot.
Or us either.
We don't have any guns in this budget.
Oh, yeah, okay. No guns or ammo.
No.
But, you know, having said that, I'm still thinking about this, and I'm thinking seriously about it, just have not reached a final conclusion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. James?
I have to hear Commissioner Webb and some of you. I've just, you've just about convinced me to vote to increase taxes. But I believe I've been saying, whoa, I've been saying for three years to be prepared for this day today.
Yes, sir.
So it's no surprise to any of you. And I don't buy the 44 jobs that's going to be lost. There'll be no jobs lost because they're already gone.
Not on Level Two. Those are actually filled positions. Level One takes the vacancies out.
Oh, wait a minute, but you're going to rehire all of these people that have been laid off, such as in social services and those? So don't say we're going to save jobs. That's just a way to say I don't want to raise taxes because we're going to do this. But you're not, those jobs are already gone.
Sure. If you were to go to Level Two, if you were to go to Level Two with those additional 40 positions, and then you said, okay, let's, we're going to take all those people and backfill them into all the vacancies in DSS and elsewhere, you have to qualify. You have to be, meet the minimum state requirements for those jobs as a social worker, a child protective services worker, you know, whatever it may be. They don't match is the problem.
But they're not laid off, is what I'm saying. The bodies are not going to be gone.
They would be if you went to Level Two.
All your figures can show you anything that you want to, and you know that. But anyway, that's beside the point. But I think that we have to look at the total picture, too. We're just looking at the residential houses. We're not looking at all the farmland, the businesses and so forth. And you're going to find that people, like I can afford to pay my taxes, everybody's setting up, you can afford to pay them because you've got money. But you've got a lot of people out there who own fixed income, and they don't have that extra money that they can spare, so to speak. And just because somebody in some department wants something, doesn't mean they're needed. Sometimes they want too much, and it causes more trouble than what they'll get. But anyway, I'm standing firm as to what I said. I'm not saying, Commissioner Gass, you're not right or wrong, but I hope whatever you do, that you have a clear conscience. I'm going to have one. Thank you. Thank you so much, though, Mr. Manager, and I think you've done a good job. I really do. I wish you could sell me and convince me, but that's impossible. Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Kind of reluctant to say what I want to say because I can visualize what Eugene's going to respond with. Be that as it is. I want to ask, didn't we have a program or agreement to buy cars some years ago, Scott, or did I miss out on something?
We did create probably three years ago. We started a three-year capital replacement program where we borrowed, how much was it the first year? $750,000? $750,000 with a bank loan that actually, we paid the first half of the first year, then had to pay the second half of that loan payment the second year. By the time the second year rolled around, by the time the second year rolled around, the recession hit, and we had to stay good on the, making the second payment, but we couldn't implement year two of the plan because the revenues weren't there. So we had a good plan, we just didn't have the revenues to...
Short and long, is, when was the last time we bought cars?
Three years ago.
All right. How many did we buy then with that first installment?
30?
25 to 30.
Ma'am?
25 to 30.
Okay. You know, we've had reevaluation, which I suppose was a catalyst in what we have here before us today. Revale is, we used to do it every eight years, but in the wisdom of our administrators, and tied to what I personally felt, we changed it to four years. I said then that that was an indirect increasement of tax, or directly, whichever you want to view it. But over a four-year period, supposedly, of course, we've been in undue circumstances, you've got a growth during that period. That is where we come up with the concept of having a neutral, revenue neutral, because of that growth in there, it puts you back to a standpoint. But be that as it is, I think in addition to that, that we need to think in terms of, as we prepare for this budget coming up, the fund balance, that has been an important fact and component of county government, specifically in the last few years. But we all aware of some things that's coming down the pike. If they come to futation, will drastically affect our fund balance. That's why I think that, I'm concluding to what I'm fixing to say that I said Eugene probably wouldn't like. But I do have some concern about our fees that Scott has outlined. And it might, when you find a fee that maybe has increased 40 or 50%, I think that would warrant some review of that fee. Some did not, but some did. I am in favor of the Level One proposal that's been presented here, where you call it revenue neutral or tax increase or whatever you want to call it. It does accomplish what I think that the manager and his staff has indicated we need for this county. In addition to that, I'd like to hand out something to be, as a supplement to that. There has been no cost of living increase for the last four years for our county employees, if my information is correct. And I believe to add a cost of living to our employees would cost about half a cent. Plus what is outlined in Level One, I'd like to have us to add to that a half a cent, and that be used for the cost of living for our employees that have not had any extra compensation for the last four years. I first considered, well, we've got probably seven people in the county that make in excess of $100,000. Maybe they should not be included in that. But be that as it is, that could be approached from the standpoint of merit pay. But having said that, that's my feeling of how this budget ought to go. Level One plus this half cent for COLA for the employees.
Okay. Are you going to recommend that? Would you like to do that in the form of a motion so we could consider that as a directive?
If it's a proper time for that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I so move in relation to what I just said. I'll say it.
Okay, and we've got a second. And I want to ask a discussion, and I'm going to ask a question first, for change. If, as I understand it, the Level One budget, as you presented, came in at 68.0, where last year it was 68 point...
66.5.
66.5 is the current rate.
66, I mean, not 68, I'm sorry.
The...
68.5 is the current rate.
Correct.
But what is in the budget?
Well, that's...
If Level One goes...
68 flat.
68 flat. So this would be sort of bringing back what it is presently.
Commissioner Owens's motion, it would take the rate from 66.5 up two pennies to 68.5.
Okay. So we would just go back to what it was, or what it is now?
Well, no, you're...
No!
No, it's a two cent.
And I'm just listening.
From a rate adjustment, it's a rate adjustment of 1.5 cents to bring it to revenue neutral plus a half penny tax increase.
Okay, I've got you.
The equivalent of two pennies.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yes.
Okay, hold on. I'll start down here and go, I saw Webb, then Garrick.
I just want to, what percentage of the cost of living would that be?
1.5.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was...
Is that it?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Mr. Garrick?
I think that's a great idea, but I am very much concerned about voting for what I believe this would be, in fact, a tax increase. To me, my definition, Melanie, you are the expert, correct me if I'm wrong, revenue neutral at 68 cents is not a tax increase in summary. It can be for individuals, it can be less for individuals, but in the overall summary, the revenue neutral at 68 cents is not a tax increase.
It brings in the same amount of revenue as you generated the prior year under the old rate.
Correct. Okay. Rate adjustment, like you said, some folks will pay less, some folks will pay...
That is correct, because we don't have individual tax rates for everybody.
1% will pay more, I'm sorry.
But we don't have, we said for the residential housing stock across Pitt County...
Explain to me then, please, how do you get from 66.5 to 68 without an increase?
You've got it. Some of them are...
1.5 cents of that is the equivalent of the effective revaluation that we just completed. The other half cent for the motion is Commissioner Owens's motion to include another half penny to make it two pennies flat for the COLA.
One question I asked you earlier some months back, how do you get new revaluations and the property still be underwater?
Well, if the property's underwater, that really, that's a separate issue and situation from revaluation. If a property under, bought a piece of property, leveraged it with very little down, and then got an interest rate, you know, balloon interest rate payment, they put themselves into that situation. It has nothing to do with revaluation. That's a personal situation. You want to add to that? I don't know.
It truly is. I mean, that's a situation between the property owner and the bank that they worked with.
I wasn't through with my thought.
Okay, Mr. Garrick, just so...
So my point is, I am totally supportive of Level One at the 68 cents, because I, in my definition, my understanding, that is not a tax increase. Now, to go to 68.5, that is a tax increase, and that does concern me, that does bother me, even though, as I said earlier, I would love to do that for our county employees because they do a tremendous job. But that money would have to come from the citizens who are equally concerned about money. So I'm going to have to think on that one. That's my comments.
Okay. Mr. McGlaughlin, I saw your hand next, and then Mr. James.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, this additional percentage for our employees, certainly I'm for our employees getting as much as they can, considering this tight economy, what would that do to the current budget based upon Mr. Owens's recommendation? How would we be in terms of satisfying the Level One with an additional percentage for our employees?
You would be fine because the additional half penny being added to the penny and a half brings in about $600,000, and that is roughly what it would take to implement a 1.5% cost of living adjustment to the employees. So the half penny, in effect, covers most of the cost of living increase if the board were to go that way.
And you said we would be fine?
Yes.
Remember, in Scott's presentation yesterday, this rate supports Level One. Anything you do above Level One, you have to identify new revenue. So he's put a new expenditure in called a COLA, but Mr. Owens also says, I have an offsetting revenue for the half cent increase. If you didn't increase a half a cent, we would have to cut 500, 600,000 in order to put a COLA in. And I don't know that you have that much flexibility in your budget unless you go back to people or positions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. James?
It's amazing to me that certain people on this board talk about losing jobs, and yet they come up with a tax increase to pay the employees that we do have. Not they don't deserve it, but that's the most ridiculous stuff I've ever heard of. Not they don't deserve it, but that's the most ridiculous stuff I've ever heard of. And what you're doing, whether you like it or not, is a tax increase. You already got an increase. Don't kid yourselves. Two, you don't raise the, your dad not have a tax increase. Somebody's going to have to pay the extra money. That's all I got to say. Anybody want debate on the issue? I'll take you off.
Madam Chair, Mr. Owens' prefaced remark says in four years running, there had not been a cost of living increase, and that's what I think his basis was for doing it for the employees, was the half cent would be to give the employees that do the work in the county and for the county that half cent, which I support wholeheartedly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Webb.
Yesterday, did we say the true revenue neutral rate was sixty-eight five?
Sixty-eight point oh five. Yeah, I wish, yeah.
All right. I think it'd be a great thing to do for our employees, I just, the method bothers me. And I'm glad we're having the discussion, but, and I guess we're not, are we voting on...
We have a motion and a second, so we will vote on that motion.
Just to...
We'll get there. Mr. McGlaughorn, I got you.
Well, what I was asking is if we had more time to see if we could identify the money without...
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
And then, Mr. McGlaughorn.
I think, Mr. Webb, what we have here is a motion for this proposition. Then we go, Madam Chair, at your direction, we're going to have a letter date meeting that we will direct the manager to present our budget for the public hearing. Now, am I correct? That's my understanding.
This will be a directive for the leadership team with the manager to consider this.
So, this just furthers the discussion?
Yes. And then they will bring that back to us with that, and as it is now.
Any other additions that we're talking about?
Because we haven't really voted on it. We're giving them directions as to what to bring back to us.
Okay, this vote would not lock it into the budget? It would just further the discussion and the research into...
This process right now is to have those things placed on their plate to go back and look at and bring back to us, which at that time, we will vote on whatever they bring back to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughorn.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on, Mr. McGlaughorn.
I'm sorry.
Get him next, and then I'll get you and Mr....
Mark, when you made your statement, you said something about some employees who may or may not have gotten a raise or something in the past, or someone, you said something similar to that. But what I'm concerned is that if this is to be implemented, and I'll vote on it if it's to be implemented, that it's across the board, every employee will get a raise. Every important area, every employee will get a cost of living raise.
That was my motion.
Maybe that's your motion, but I didn't, you know, I didn't quite, I put some preferences in there. So, yeah, I'll be in favor of that.
Okay. Mr. Garrett's?
So, what this vote is for, is for them to come back to us with a plan that includes one and a half percent raise across the board?
Correct.
Okay. And then, at that point in time, we'll have three options then, Level One, Level Two, and this new one. And we'll vote on one of those three.
Well, can I say?
They will present you a rebalanced budget with that in it.
It's Level One budget with the one point five percent cost of living included in it, which would come with the cost of half a penny.
But I think our directive in the end will be exactly what you just said. I haven't heard any support for Level Two. So, I don't think that directive will go to you to come back to us with anything to do with Level Two. Just one second. I think Level, what we're saying is you come back to us with Level One as it is, and Level One with this addition, and how it can be managed. That's how we usually work it.
The motion's made when you vote on it. If it passes, then we would come back with a Level One budget with that addition. Now, come the night of the public hearing, whenever you decide to adopt the budget ordinance, whatever you adopt, if you adopt it with or without it, would dictate whether it's included.
But can't we direct you to come back to us with, leaving, for us to have an opportunity to vote on the Level One, and the Level One with the change?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't think you've got asked him that.
Okay, but I mean, I think that's kind of what we're feeling.
What our intent...
And I just want to make sure that that's allowable.
What our intent, I think Scott was, knows what you want to come back with, but I would suggest we come back next Tuesday, because there were some that wanted to consider the proposal, and that's the reason I broached it that way.
But that's not your motion. You didn't say one and a half cents, you said a half cent. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, it equates to a one point five percent cost of living for the employees, at the cost of half a penny on the tax rate.
Right.
That was where the one point five came in. Okay.
I'm not understanding math a little bit. I can't understand how you get from sixty-six point five to sixty-eight point oh without any increase.
You don't. It takes another half penny, it takes two full pennies, from sixty-six point five to sixty-eight point five, to include that cost of living.
But the other side, Mr. Hammond, is when you had a sixty-six and a half cent rate last year, your property that you applied that rate to was worth eleven point six billion. Next year, your property that you will apply your tax rate to is at eleven point three billion, because your base dropped with revale. So, to generate the same dollar amount on a smaller base takes a higher rate. So, sixty-eight cent on the new base generates exactly the same as sixty-six and a half on the old base. So, we aren't, when you see a rate adjustment, you're not gaining any extra money, because that which you tax tranked.
The revale went down, didn't it, Melanie?
Correct, which is why the value went down, so the rate has to go up to stay the same.
You got it.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, since I haven't spoken to the motion. I believe that the world might come to an end. I think Mr. James and I might vote the same on this issue, because this proposal would, in my opinion, vote to increase taxes further than what was presented by the county manager, and so I will vote against the motion.
Okay. Mr. Webb?
If I could just take a few more licks on this dead horse, I would also, I mean, we know what the number is, and I'm not very comfortable with increasing taxes. I'd probably vote for this motion to further the conversation, and then I'll decide how to vote when we get to it. But could we, could the department heads not also get involved in, we know what the number is, so to see if we can come up with some cuts is what, I know we're barebone, but if the department heads can get engaged with their employees, on where they can save enough money to cover it, then we don't have to raise taxes.
The book stops him.
Six hundred thousand dollars?
The twenty-six million dollar budget, asking him to come up with, on top of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which he's already saying he can't suffer those cuts.
I understand that, but I'm saying, just, I'm not just, so it's not just on the taxpayers, if it were to pass, but that we could work as county employees to work for ourselves, that we're not ourselves, but themselves, to help make that happen for themselves, even if it was a lower increase than one point five. Because I just want to be clear, we're not committing to raising taxes for this today. We're furthering the discussion, correct, Mr. Owens?
Correct.
That's it.
That's the proposal. Give me a little information about the timeline that we have established now. I mean, how soon can we come back and hear your presentation? I don't think we want it on the night that we do the public hearings. We have to do it after we approve the budget.
Your next normal meeting is Monday, June the fourth. Public hearing will be the next night on Tuesday, June the fifth. Now, if you wanted to come back next week, I think Mr. Owens had suggested...
I was just suggesting...
Well, I think we need to. That was what I was trying to get this in place.
You can come back Tuesday, May the twenty...
For the employer, we don't need to be tweeting it.
When is a good time for you all? Tuesday, will you be ready by Tuesday? I know we have Monday off.
I got to do six hundred thousand.
That's right, there ain't no problem.
Okay, you want to come back Friday?
There's...
You have what you have.
If you want us to add it, we add it.
Okay, do you want us to come back Friday? I'm just saying that we're, this is budget, we had this all week set aside.
Really, I think that the decision is in your hands. If you decide, if you as a board decide to implement a one and a half percent cost of living adjustment to the employees, it's a half penny on the tax rate. So, if we come back Friday, or we come back Tuesday, we'd be telling you the same thing we're telling you.
You'll be telling us the same thing.
It'd be nothing different.
So, if we take the vote right now, yes or no, it would mean that it's going to, you will either include it when you come back to us?
Right.
Or not include it?
We'll build it into the budget ordinance, and then when you hold the public hearing, and then whenever you decide to adopt that budget ordinance, that would be the final date that would be effective or not. But today is just giving us an indication as to whether to build it in or not.
Okay. So, we understand what the motion is, everybody? Everybody? So, if this is voted on and approved, that means you will come back to us with a budget including this.
On the night of the public hearing.
Okay.
I was going to vote for this until you said on the night of the public hearing, because normally what is presented on the night of the public hearing is what people expect us to be implementing.
But there is nothing to bring back.
I know that.
I guess that's where I'm...
Other than Level One with an additional six hundred thousand dollars in.
Exactly.
And so, there's no way, so there's not going to be a discussion, there's no other way to do it without the tax.
My motion was to come back at a letter date, so this board could discuss my motion.
Right.
Mark, would you want that to come back to us before the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I suggested Tuesday.
I agree with that.
And that was what I was saying.
And I guess I'm confused, because I don't know what to bring you. We're going to bring you something that's Level One plus a half a cent.
You're going to bring Level One with six hundred thousand.
Because there is nothing to cut to fund it.
Yes.
We were pulling teeth to get positions, to get you to Level One. There is not going to be five to six hundred thousand identified if we met with departments starting now until next Tuesday. It is not, that flexibility does not exist. So, we're going to bring you back a sixty-eight and a half cent budget with this in it or not.
And this is what I'm trying to get us to understand. Usually, at this time in the budget process, we give you directives as to different things, and I've heard nothing from anyone as far as the change is concerned, except this item that is on to vote. So, if that passes, then that means it will be added into the budget, and that's what we will be presenting.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else, okay?
Madam Chair, was this, is this based on the premise that we will come back Tuesday, May the 29th, at 8:30 a.m. to further discuss this, or not?
Nothing is going to change if you come back.
Mr. Owens is...
She's already told you that.
Commissioner Owens is saying, yeah, this is part of your motion, then, Commissioner Owens?
That was my motion.
Okay.
Okay. Did we include the Tuesday in the motion? Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, that just confused me. If we are voting for this now, why would we have to come back Tuesday with it? Why are you going to vote again and again Tuesday? I'm confused.
I understand.
If we're going to vote now, we're voting now for what Mr. Owens said. Now, why do we have to come back? What's the purpose of coming back Tuesday? Explain that to me.
I'll explain to you.
Yes, sir.
There were some reservations by one or more members of this board, whether or not they want to vote for or against this motion, Melvin. I, as a follow-up to that, suggested that we bring the proposition back for final vote on Tuesday.
But we're voting now.
We're voting now to give the members that have not made up their mind time to think about the addition of the point oh five.
But we don't need to vote now.
And you can take the time. I just want you to understand, we're not going to bring you back a document that's any different. It's just going to be...
It's going to have six and a half cents tax.
That's right, it's the same. It's simple, just vote Tuesday.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay, we have a substitute motion.
My substitute motion is that we go on and support Level One with the sixty-eight cents.
Okay. Is there a second to the substitute motion?
I second.
We have a second. In other words, that we present the budget?
I think that's an illegal motion, though, because it refutes what the motion is on the table.
I thought that's what a substitute motion is.
You can make that, right, Madam Attorney, you can make that substitute motion, is to, if you vote in favor of this, then you're recommending that you support the Level One budget as presented to us.
Without a cost of living adjustment.
Without a cost of living adjustment. Yes, ma'am.
The motion is appropriate. I'm going to ask, as a matter of housekeeping, that we clear out the screen that we have now. It will allow me to bring Mr. McGlaughorn back present and clear out anyone who voted on something different.
Okay, so we all need to vote something?
Yes, if anyone, that won't count for anything. So, if everyone, and I'll mash Mr. McGlaughorn's button, this doesn't matter, I'll clean out your screen.
And while we're doing that...
If everyone would do that.
Do you want to restate your motion?
My motion is very simple, that we go on and approve the Level One budget presentation, which is revenue neutral at a sixty-eight cents level.
That does not include any cost of living?
No, it's not. It's Level One, the one you presented.
Okay.
Okay, and, yes, Commissioner Johnson seconded it. Mr. James, if you'll clear your vote any way you want to, about anything.
How do I clear?
No, I think I'd vote it too, and I'll at least be cleared, Madam Chair.
If Mr. James would just vote anything, I can clear.
Yes, yes, and whatever.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, Mr. Smith, and then...
We have done voted on this motion, the way I understand it.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't.
We haven't voted on anything.
We haven't voted on any budget at all.
Oh, why would we vote before we start with it? It was on Level One.
We haven't, we were just giving our opinions and our support. We haven't had a motion to support Level One, Two, or the COLA.
So, right now, the motion on the table, so right now, the motion on the...
Yes, let's listen.
So, right now, the substitute motion that is on the table directs the manager to bring back for public hearing the Level One budget that he has presented to you already with no change.
Okay. And Mr. Webb, you had a comment?
That is being clear, we can stop herding mosquitoes now, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right. Does everyone understand what we're voting on now?
Say that again.
Revenue neutral, Level One budget, without any COLA increase.
That's what y'all agree with.
What we're voting on now to send forward, to come back for our public hearing, correct?
That's correct. You're not approving a budget, you are just advising the manager to make no changes to his proposed budget before the public hearing.
This is on Level One now. If it passes, you are, if you don't, we keep on talking. Keep on talking.
Okay, so, we're going to vote now.
You are voting for the manager to make no changes to the Level One proposed budget and bring it back for your consideration following the public hearing.
Another question, I'm sorry, maybe I'm like I am. Now, Mark's motion, when would that come back?
It's gone.
It won't come back if this passes. It's failed if this passes.
Okay, I got you.
It would come back if this motion fails.
I got you.
It will sell a third on it.
That passes, so the substitute motion does not come back.
Okay.
The effect being that the manager is directed not to bring any revisions back to the budget before the public hearing.
Okay. So, we're...
Madam Chairman, aren't we ready for adjournment?[1754.66]